All right, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting of Interstate 35 reported directors regular. February 27th, 2023, meetings are ordered. I would like to welcome everybody. I'm happy to see all the interest in the meeting tonight. I hope the kids have brought questions. No? All right, we're gonna start with a rule call. Jeremy Mask present?
Can't even answer.
Melissa Keller present.
Roger, are you still there?
Roger Kedoy present.
All right. And we'll start the Pledge of Allegiance. I have located the flag over here. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna review the I-35 mission statement and district priorities. Our mission statement reads, "The Interstate 35 community school district exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible productive citizens in an ever-changing society." Our district priorities. Number one, articulate and support a cohesive student-centered pre-take vision for continuous school improvement. Engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century. And number three, operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. While the board should receive the agenda and then review it. We do need a motion to second the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the agenda.
Second that. So properly moved and seconded that we have approved the agenda. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye? That puts us to the open forum. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees or students for their performance. Mr. Gibson?
I'm sure we're to stand in here. I guess we'll just stand right here in the corner. So thank you for your time. I just wanted to bring up a couple more things regarding transparency. The agenda was posted a little late, but got access to it. But none of the links work. I think I was only able to actually read Mr. Bonte, Ms. Whitson, and Mr. Weber's report. All the other links were inaccessible. I requested access and didn't end up getting access to any of them. So I just wanna bring that up again. We've still got a transparency problem for the public documents. Parents and staff and students and others aren't able to read before a board meeting and have meaningful dialogue with their district representatives. So I continue to ask that you work on that transparency side of it. In particular, one caught my attention, the district redistricting. So that link was accessible, but it's just a map and it's really hard to read. Best I could tell was there's like a little notch coming out of District One and it's moving over to District Two. But there's no data around what exactly the changes are. So I asked for a little bit more public transparency on that redistricting and how that works and who makes that decision and everything, preferably before the board meeting, so we can have time to talk with board members with any concerns. The other thing I want to talk to you guys about is the Safer Families Act of 2023, House Study Bill 173. If you haven't looked at it, that's gonna be fast-tracked pretty soon. Both parents and I had part in Division Four in particular of House Study Bill 173, which prohibits insurance companies from removing insurance coverages for schools that allow staff or, yeah, staff to carry and protect our kids. So I'd ask that you guys continue to pay attention to that. And I know that was one of your hang-ups before of allowing trained staff to carry in our rural district, where we got a 20-minute response time from Madison County. That's a long time. So please pay attention to that and be prepared to act quickly as soon as that law gets signed in. Talk to Governor Reynolds and they do plan on making that immediate upon signature. So it won't have to wait till July. So keep track of that. And if you guys can do work up ahead as much as possible for that, so we don't have to wait, I'd be really appreciative of that. So those are the main things to talk about. Again, if you can continue to work on the transparency stuff so we can read stuff for a board meeting, like the bills and stuff, monthly bills, I couldn't get access to any of that stuff. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the third grade spotlight.
So we have third grade here with Ms. Stapp.
Okay, I just wanna tell you that in third grade, one of the standards that we work on is writing an opinion paper. And another standard that we work on is presenting a piece to an audience, which is scary. And so we have four third graders and we have some supporters. I need your support. They are going to present an opinion, four opinion pieces. I didn't write words. Yeah, okay, yep. One of you over there, one of you over here. Their opinions, they were to write their opinion piece on whether our school should wear school uniforms or not. Unfortunately, I gave them what their opinion was. Next one, they get to choose their own opinion. But so they will be presenting, and they were a little nervous that you were gonna vote that we had to wear school uniforms. I assured them that was not the case.
My name is Wyatt. In my opinion, this is why we should wear school uniforms. One reason is that it would be easier to get dressed. Also, the journey will be quicker. Another reason lies that it's all way down. This is why we should wear school uniforms.
My name is Hayden Tuttle. If you ask me, I don't think we should wear school uniforms. One reason I feel this way is because Miss Lepus would see that we are wearing the same thing and call us the wrong name. Another reason is it would be boring to wear the same thing every day. And last but not least is when you go outside and it's muddy. If you fall, you will get the uniform dirty or ruined. That is why I don't think we should wear school uniforms.
Hi, I'm Charlotte. If you ask me, we should wear school uniforms at Interstate 35 Community School. One reason I feel this way is because we will match, which means we'll all look similar. Also, we will all look very nice and nobody will be made fun of or bullied. That's why we should wear school uniforms.
Okay, one, in my opinion, I don't think I-35 should wear school uniforms because someone will come for it. Also, you can't show pride for a team or club. Another reason is if a visitor comes, you could get re-fucked. My last reason is because the uniforms might be a little expensive and someone might not be able to afford it. Therefore, I'm against school uniforms.
Sharon, did you block the light?
I was trying to. There you are.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your time, school. The board, we appreciate it.
Well, I have a few questions for you.
First of all, do you have one question?
What are really easy questions?
No, I don't care.
Okay, so I don't care.
Well, how about some comments? Would you listen to us make a few comments?
Yeah.
Is that okay? I thought you guys did a wonderful job and I appreciate you coming and talking to us. It's not that scary, is it? No? Nope? Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Good job. Oh, they're not taking questions.
Try, you can try one.
Yeah, how did you determine to bring these four, or these six, these four presenters and the two supporters?
Everybody was invited to come to support. And everyone did a really nice job, but I thought these four did a really exceptional job of writing the expectations for an opinion piece.
Well, good, I'm glad you guys came. This is great. Thank you for coming. It's not so, it's nervous when you're first, right? Presenting stuff in front of somebody, but then you notice it's not so bad. We're just normal people. It's not so bad. But it takes a lot of guts to do this, so I appreciate it.
And I'd like to thank your parents for bringing you. It's coming to a school board meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
You guys did a very good job.
We're not having questions. You gotta close the doors, train now, right?
Roger, you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay. I'm just gonna check in, 'cause I'd like to recall you if you lose this one. All right, we're gonna move on to our administrative reports. I'll just go down to mine. Mr. Bonte is up first.
Yeah, if you click on mine, there's a link in there that'll have FAST data. I've got two English teachers here to kind of talk about the FAST data. I'll talk just really quickly about our TARDI policy and our behavior data for this year and this semester. As we kind of talked about, our TARDI policy wasn't really in full effect first semester. We got kind of behind ourselves. And there were, I think, 98 students I put on here that had three or more TARDIs first semester. This semester, we're down to 25. And those that are consistently serving after school, we've got a good process. They know what's going on when they get there. They come, they put their phones down, and then they work through the time. And they're there from about 3:20 to 3:45. So we've seen a really good increase in terms of, a decrease in behavior, if that makes sense. So that's been good. And then if we look at our Panorama data for percentile of students showing positive behavior, and that's dictated by major referrals that are written in the system, and Panorama pulls that nightly, and we can kind of look at that. And so at the time that I pulled that data, 91% of our ninth grade was meeting expectation, 94% of 10th grade, 94% of 11th, and 100% of 12th graders were being at expectation. And so we're on the right track. A lot of conversations first semester that got us to that point, but I think the kids are really receptive to those conversations and change their behavior as they go. So now to the really cool thing. I have Mrs. Donahue and Mrs. Belton here to talk about our FAST data for English Language Arts and everything they've done there. So if you could scroll down a little bit, there should be a PowerPoint slide. It's yellow, that FAST test growth. You could click on that. Then they just have a couple slides they wanted to talk to you about.
Kind of a tough act to follow with all those third graders, though. Okay, so we thought we would include the benchmarks to show with the FAST data. This is what we expect. This is the ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade. So this was their fall, where they should have been, and this is the winter. This would be ones that we consider on the college pathway. These are ones that would be at some risk and these are ones that would be at the high risk that they need extra assistance. So we have, sorry. So the F is fall, W is the winter. So in the fall, 65% of the ninth grade was proficient. When we took the winter, we increased it to 73%. So what we have here, this is your ones that are at the high risk. This would be some risk. That means they just need a little extra support. These are the ones that are proficient. These are the ones that are considered the college pathway for the ninth grade. Okay, 10th grade, I had 64.7% of my students would achieve positive growth in their FAST testing and they had over 420 points that they competitively achieved on that. I had 62% proficient in the fall and 72% proficient in the winter. So it increased by 10%. And then I had almost 80% positive growth with the 11th grade, had over 400 points of positive growth. And then 57% were proficient in the fall and 63% were proficient in the winter. So a majority of our students, 9 through 12, either made positive growth or were proficient.
Can we ask questions? The first numbers you gave, I think, for context, those are in 553. And then, so I guess, could you help me understand what's the goal or benchmark to get these kids to proficient? Because I think I have like a 100% proficient, right? I just don't know if there's proficient and then there's, you know, are there different categories beyond that?
Just the college pathway would be the one, so. That goes above. Right, it goes above. It just keeps increasing. I think the top score is 600, which we haven't seen. But so if they fall above this number but below this number, that would be your proficient. Or, sorry, this number. Here would be some that need a little extra support in some of the comprehension skills for reading and writing. Mostly the FAST is for the comprehension part.
Okay, so this helps me. But then there are no numbers, there are just percentages on the next slide, right?
Right, right.
So all of these students here, 44% or 46% here in the winter would have met that least.
That right here.
Got it. Right, so they would have been in the.
Light purple is advanced.
Right.
Regular. So they're above that 500.
Efficient.
So.
So we just don't have, this is just tells you kind of where they're supposed to be.
We actually put together, these are the type of things that they're assessed on. It's reading literature, reading for information. We included a sample, what it would look like for a student. We just took the student's name off. So it would be, it shows this person is just above that college pathway and then it shows the skills that they've achieved and some that they just need to work on.
Got it, got it. And is the target to get everybody to like 80% proficient? Is it 90? Is it 100?
That would be as a whole class, that's how many are proficient. So we want them all as above that levels. So when they fall in that high risk, that's when they start receiving the extra support.
Okay, good, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yep, the interventions.
So we utilize this to figure out what the interventions are and what.
We had AEA come in and do a training on FAST testing, A-MAP, and A-reading for all of our core teachers to go about a month ago, so that we can start utilizing this better when we're preparing for our lessons. Because we know that sometimes, like in a science class, a student might not do as well as they might do in another class, but it might be because they don't read very well. And it's not that they don't do science well, it's that they don't read as well. And so if we can bring down the level to what they can read at, then the context is more, is right there for them to grasp.
And we're able to differentiate all of their art. Need a better lesson, bring them back up.
Got it. Thank you. This is where you get to run.
Okay, do you have any questions? Last time.
Is that how this works?
Yeah, that's how this is supposed to work, is what I'm just. Give me a second, I think I do. Well, while you're looking for those, I did want to add something else. I spoke with my fifth and sixth grade reading and ELA teachers today and they're so excited because they're nearing that quarter again where the students were to read five books. And if they read five books at their level, independent level, then they would get to have a party. So currently, we're at 75 students out of 107 who have met the goal. They're looking to have 80 students out of 107. So we're thinking 27 students will not be participating in that party, but instead, those students will be working towards the next quarter. So hopefully, 100% of those students will make the goal by the end of the year. So that's amazing and those ladies have worked really hard. And students have to perform at least 70% or better on the comprehension questions to be able to even consider the book as a learning experience. So that's awesome and I'm pretty proud of the work that students and staff have been doing there.
Capturing Kids.
Yep.
Have you used that before?
We're just starting. In fact, my friend over there, Danielle, she, they used it at her old school. And we were looking for ways to try to ask more questions of students so that the behaviors stay in that classroom instead of having to just always come to the office. But working through ways to develop social skills and accountability on the parts of our students. So we are just in the initial phase of this process. And I am pretty proud of our data, too. If you looked at the data, it's pretty amazing. Hard work from these teachers that I have over here. So am I done? Finished?
Anybody have a question? You can open it up to the audience question.
Listen.
Yes.
I will say, your daughter and a few others, they come in because they weren't getting to read in the classroom after they ate their lunch. So I was in the room when Mrs. Coda was discussing who could come and practice reading if they wanted to. And she had to turn them down. I said, "You've come to my office." So every day, there's a few that come to my office.
As I say, I think there's a group, isn't there?
Yeah, there's.
Like a group.
They're a chatty group, but they're good.
Actually, I do have a quick question. Conferences.
Yes.
Twice a year. No, I love it that they're student-driven and opened up to the parents as well. So the first time they have conferences, it's more parents and teachers, right?
Well, it was this year. We're just initiating a student list for this time.
So it'll be like that going forward?
Yeah, we're excited about it, too. It's been like, quickly, let's gather the information for them to share and then they'll practice and then hopefully our parents will come support them.
Yep, I like that.
And then cell phone stuff, how's that going?
It's going very good. We've only had a few, I bet on our list, we have maybe 10 students that have made a poor choice in using their phone. But no, it's, and the students are talking at the table and even in the hallway, it's more positive. The teachers will tell you that, too. Oh, no cell phones ever.
You probably have more fractures at work.
Yeah, no, it's been a win-win. And it is good, it's like two, I had two boys today. One had forgotten his cell phone and it was in his hoodie. And he's just the sweetest little seventh grade kid. He's not, he's not a, he won't tell you tales, right? And he came, "I forgot my cell phone and I went to PE this morning and I put it in my PE locker and it's not locked. Can I go get it?" You know, because he's so worried it wouldn't be there. But he didn't realize he'd have to PE that he forgot to leave it in the right place. So I had two of those today and they just were so responsible about it. No, it's been going well.
Thank you.
Should I call, was it any questions?
You know, I write data, I'm sorry. I didn't get mine on a fancy PowerPoint, but I'll try to write around here real quick. I've got a few different pieces and I just printed it directly off the site this time because I didn't get it on a separate sheet. So make sure I'm holding you guys all the same.
So our FAST testing just finished, if you didn't figure that out. A lot of really good things going on.
Just make that one. Yeah, that's just fine. I should have just printed one page there. So same concept as what those gals were just showing you. Light purple is desirable, purple is gray. Light pink, we've got a little bit of work to do to catch up that gray discrepancy and more of that dark pink is, we've got some sort of a problem going on here that we need to address. Did I get it? Sorry, yep. So this first one you have, it's labeled CVNR reading. This is words per minute. This is fluency and that's it. The kids get three one-minute passages and it averages out that result. And this kind of shows you where we started the year with that. First grade only has one column because in the fall, they do not do words per minute. They do have a similar test called sentence reading, but it's more like a picture book. Whereas this time around, first graders were handed, you know, a single passage on a page that's kind of not equivalent. So our school-wide goal is made around this data in addition to early literacy, which I'll show you in a minute. So kindergarten and first grade have an early literacy score. And preschool, we've kind of made up an early foundational skill comparison to feed into our school-wide goal as well. So this is one of those pieces. I will show you next the other, the early reading, which is the alternative test that kindergarteners and first graders take. So these are more reading foundational and there's a couple subtests that make up their overall score. So obviously, you can see a lot of celebrations on this page, which means if we are making adjustments at that early, early grade levels and you can see that we're moving ground, if we can continue to build up those practices at that age, we have a lot less hills to climb when they're fourth graders and they've gotten what they need the entire, you know, educational experience. So a lot of work has gone into phonemic awareness and phonics and early foundational literacy skills. Those, that growth shows we're getting there. And kindergarten was just giddy with themselves because they did have the first green column on our school-wide scoreboard that's in our entry there. There are a lot more yellows. They made up these things like, you know, we got a lot of ketchup and a lot of mustard and we just need some pickles. So they got really excited about it. We hung up a pickle in our window and they were super proud about that. So this next one, I should have printed them all this way, but this one is early math. So again, just kindergarten and first grade. I did click the longitudinal button. So what you're seeing is last year would be the first three scores and this year would be the last two scores. So you can see, you know, in kindergarten, that looks really promising. Like what's caused that jump there? A lot of factors. We did adopt a math curriculum into preschool, but they didn't even have that last year. So we gotta kind of sit through, what are the factors that are supporting kindergarteners being more grade-ready for these types of assessments? And then obviously, first grade went down a little bit. In the grand scheme of things, that's probably about two kids, two first graders making up that variation. But that's, you know, something that our team can analyze and figure out, how do we want to proceed? And what do we need to do to make sure that that number goes up the next time? So that's a little bit of that. Any other questions about my report or anything else you want to talk about?
Is there individual reporting that's still sent home for different students?
Yep, yep, so each one. Each classroom teacher has the discretion to build their own or FAST does make a parent summary that gives all of that. So yeah, either way, they can, yep, send that one. Anything else?
And just if you remember the process, because I think sometimes it's good to review. This is the screening test. So if a student flags on this, so they're in that pink zone, then our interventionist will work with that student and probably give them a diagnostic test to see if there's something in their foundational skill makeup that we can target right away or look and see if there's something whole class and some of those curricular issues. So this is just the screener and it's actually supposed to flag more students because it doesn't want anybody to fall through the cracks. So this is kind of a precursor. It's not the same information as what we see on ISS and FAST. We don't do that for, ISS for our early kiddos anyway. But the foundational skills, as Danielle said, are kind of that base. And so if we're seeing these scores, the idea is that we'll see these continue to trend up in grades because they'll be fluent and they'll be able to comprehend. So when we had Ms. Belton and Ms. Donahue here talking about comprehension, that's kind of how it all starts, is those foundational skills. But it's not, it's just a screen. So just to clarify, we've talked about screeners, we've talked about diagnostic, we've talked about summative. This is just one piece of the puzzle.
This is, you know, at the teaching standpoint, and my teams have done just wonderful. But, you know, we saw this, we printed it off, we dug into it, and then they're, you know, 20 steps ahead already. So unfortunately, I didn't get to share it with you guys. But they've just been phenomenal at planning what that, what our intervention system looks like in our enrichment system and just the fluidity of kids getting what they need in our intervention system, which is referred to as when, just, they're doing so great. And kids are loving it and they're growing, so it's been awesome. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Last one, there was quite a few questions about special education. And so I sent in all my data for this meeting on special ed. Gave you. all my data for this meeting on special ed, gave you an overview of some different tools we're using at each level. One of the biggest ones is this school A-line document. That actually came from Ms. Woods. It's a tool she used in her old building. We started going over it a couple months ago to elementary teachers, and then have progressed through middle school and into high school. But that document allows any administrator that's coming into an IP meeting that doesn't live and breathe, the IPs, I know the data every single day, can quickly look at a student, what goals they have, and where their current trajectory is, so they have an idea of where that's sitting, and can ask the right type of questions with that team sitting there. So last month, we went over, you know, I've been putting on the number we're exiting, you know, I try to update that for every meeting. And so I went back a couple of years, the year before I got here, and tried to pull the data to give you just a really quick glimpse there on the bottom right-hand side of how special ed numbers are increasing. And with that, keeping in mind that we have seniors that are obviously graduating every single year, we have kids that are exiting, you know, we're at seven, we'll actually be at eight in a couple of days, that's the pending one, we just have to give the meeting the parent in here, and then hopefully a nine one, that'll be exiting, and we have students that move out, you know, every, all those things are happening for the numbers to go down, and yet the numbers are increasing at a higher pace. And so that gives you that overview, I know a couple people had asked about last month, of where we're currently at as a district, and that's all great news. So taking, looking at that, or any of the other stuff, is there any, any questions?
100%, that's more than 10% of the student population.
So, yeah, what isn't in there, actually, I put it in, and then it started to not be a quick glimpse. It's a rabbit hole, you mean, and you can really dig that into it. And I started getting way too deep, it's like, the level zeros aren't in there, so level zero is a student that just has speech, okay? Our teachers aren't working SDI with those students, that's the AEA, you know, we have speech that are prepared this year. So, so if you actually look at those numbers, like, we currently have 16 speech or 15, so it's 114 total currently today as we stand here. But 15 of those aren't, aren't students that we're looking at special ed teachers and associates and all of those to work with on a daily basis. So I, so I kind of eliminated those. I also got to a point where those are really hard to find on all the different state sites. I went in and talked with Ted, this year, because we're not, our funding doesn't staple to those, those students, it's hard to be accurate. So I decided to leave those off and give you just the true numbers of what we know. So, and these are kids that we're serving in our building, so they do not include, you know, we have students that we transport, so we do get funding for, we're transporting to another district, because we don't offer the service. That's not in the numbers. These are actual ones that our teachers work with.
What services do we not offer?
So like, that specific one would be like, a tier-three, 100% student that needs a one-on-one teacher all day long. So that, that type of service.
And a teacher versus an associate?
Correct. Yep, yep. So we have students that, I mean, we have wheelchair students, we have students that have a high number of SDI minutes, but a student that has, like, in this case, 100% one-on-one teacher-to-ratio and associate, like, that service we don't currently.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, superintendent report.
Yeah, so there are just two things that I wanted to talk about, some background on some proposed bills. I spent an active time at the State House, so that's always kind of interesting to see how that plays out. There's one that is the Governor's Transparency and Parents' Rights Bill, and this has a lot of provisions for what schools can and cannot do around things like giving surveys to students, and, you know, when you can teach about sex education, and all of those things that obviously a parent should be a part of the conversation, and so it just limits some of that. A lot of it's by grade level, so, you know, you shouldn't be teaching sex ed to kids that are younger than third grade, right? I mean, so those are some of the things that are in this transparency. It's also got information in there about resources, so books in the library, our catalog is online, so parents can see that already. We did this year set up where if you are a parent and wanted to have notification, I think we've got it kind of worked out, that you get an email notification now, so the librarian isn't necessarily calling everybody, it's just an email, and the parent can then send back, yep, these are okay for my student, or no, and then that, that's kind of the process for making sure parents are aware of what's happening in their students' reading selections. So there's a lot of things in that. It's, I think they built on what they had last year, we've talked about this in the past. So I think the idea with this is, with everything that we're seeing in kind of this, this avenue of legislation, is just making sure parents are informed, that they have an idea of what's happening in the school, that they have knowledge, because then they can make good decisions about what's best for their kid. And so that's kind of the, the parents' rights and transparency. There's another one that's also going through that is more of a comprehensive look at Chapter 12, which is the, the kind of governing document, the code that dictates what schools can and cannot do. And so that one is, I would call it almost a deregulation type of a bill, where they're looking at some of the things that have been imposed on schools over the past several years, and saying, "Why are we doing this?", and taking some of that off the, off the table. So those are two, they're both very big. There's a lot of provisions in each one, but they're definitely worth looking at, and maybe having a conversation about, either with a legislator, or, you know, even a neighbor, just so that people are informed. I think there's a lot of merit in both of them. The other one, and I apologize, I didn't, I told you, too, but there's actually a third one on preschool funding. This is one of the things that we talk about with our rural school advocates advocacy. So when I go to the meeting in October, this is one that's always come up. And what they're doing is they're proposing that if you are 200% below the poverty level, then your whole day would be funded. And that's a change, because right now, it's only a .5 funding. And so the idea is if, if a student is here all day, and the parent is 200% below income on the poverty level, then that would be a full funding weight, so we would get a 1.0 instead of a .5, which would really help kids who need that early start to school. So if you're talking to your legislators, that's one I think really would, would benefit a lot of kids, and it should probably be something that, that we're at least making ourselves aware of, because that does really impact us as a rural school. So I, I can go through some of the highlights of these, but there are so many things, and I'm just, I'm going to encourage you to look at them both, and maybe contact your representatives if you feel the need to, but the transparency for parents, I think, is a comprehensive look at how parents are involved in education, and the kind of, how Study 119 on how Chapter 12 is kind of outlined in, in schools. Those are both really, I think, meaty bills that, that need to be looked at and maybe talked about if you are inclined, so.
Has Margaret put out, Mrs. Buckton put out anything on?
They, you know, they do, they do a weekly webinar, and then they do a summary, and I can forward that for both of those. And I, and I can do the preschool as well. I don't, I didn't know you guys weren't getting them, but I can even put those just on our website if we want to, just so that even public can see them, if they want to see what those bills are about.
Okay.
No.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right, we'll move on to the next item, discuss and approve consent items. These do require a motion and second for us to take action. Past meeting minutes, everybody should have had enough people to look at and review. Our monthly bills and the financial statement have been distributed with a couple items on the desk tonight. Open enrollment, and then reservation and contract. Nathan McKinney hired as track throwing coach. Whitney Hutton hired as an associate, and Zady Hadfield designed as a long-term substitute.
Does yours say John Adams?
I've been informed that was no longer something.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So because that was on the agenda that was published, you probably needed to say that that's off the agenda.
Yeah, there was an item on there for Mr. John Adams, and that is no longer under consideration. You got a motion, I, I never can.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
So properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 All opposed? All right, items for discussion. Third reading of the 100 and 600 series board policy. This does require a motion and second for us to take action on, and this is our third and final reading of this policy. We've read, we've read through the, did we not read through the policy?
On the first one.
The first one?
Yeah.
And there's been no changes since then?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the third reading of 100 and 600 series board policy.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the third reading of the 100 and 600 series board policy. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Board approval to issue project forbid air conditioning.
So this is the, our second attempt at getting air conditioning in our middle school wing and our high school wing. If you remember, we did have this as part of our ESTR funding projection about a year and a half ago, when the bids came back, almost double what the projection was, so we tabled it, or, or didn't accept any of the bids for cost. And so what we did this time is we broke the bid into two different parts. We did ask that, where we're asking that the contractors bid all the equipment at one time, so hopefully, if we buy in bulk, we can get a lower cost. And then depending on when installation happens, we would have the units here, and then just install as we were able to. So this is the proposal for us to move forward with that process. Right now, we're slated to do the public bidding of bids on Friday, March 3, so this Unless the board decides not, so.
This is just a bid, so there's no harm in it.
Correct. Correct. Right, we're going to put it out there, see what the bids are.
Information request, see?
Correct.
Is this not the gym?
This is not the gym, okay. That'll be coming up later in the meeting.
Okay.
All right, this does require a motion and a second for us to approve the issue project forbid.
Move to approve the issue project forbid for air conditioning as presented?
I will second that.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the issue project forbid. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 All right, next item is the district redistricting.
So, yeah, with the, with the census of 2020, the idea is, is that all school districts in the state of Iowa are looking to see if their population shifted in the districts for the schools. You may have seen this, I think Dallas Center Grimes is trying to go to all-at-large districts, so it's time to kind of shift where your districts are according to population. And so currently, we have a variation of three people from the census, but that does mean that we're outside of the 10%, and so the recommendation is that we do shift our boundaries accordingly. So we've been working with Cornerstone, Doof Spatial Consulting, and so the proposal is the map that Mr. Gibson alluded to earlier. Let's see if I can pull that up. And so the, the area that's really impacted is just right here in St. Charles. There's a, there's a section where it moved to accommodate the population, none of the other district boundaries have moved. And so the idea is, is that we get within that 10%, and you can kind of see over on the left-hand side what those proposed district populations would be. So this is for your information. We'll bring it back in March for you to either approve of it, or if you have suggestions or questions before then, you can let us know, and we can bring back additional information in March. So just wanted you to have this, and kind of understand why we're moving a boundary for three people, but that gives us within kind of the, the idea of what the, the structure is built for, so.
This is just for a lot of people.
Can you guys hear it?
Yeah, we got it, Roger.
Can you provide a markup map that shows us the change, and maybe you're showing it to them, but you can provide us for more next month?
You bet. Ted and I had to really look for it. It literally is just one of the lines right here, but we will get that for you.
And if the board doesn't do anything, then the state will do it for us, because it's required that we get within the requirement.
If the state does it, will it, will it look like what you have here?
It might or it might not, but I would anticipate it to be close to somewhere in that St. Charles district for the population.
Because we could shift it north, or, I mean, wouldn't?
Right, right. Right, yeah, you can take those three people anywhere, as long as they move out of, I think, out of one and into two, or out of two and into one.
And this is just, everybody gets to vote for everybody, it's just for people who are running, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so our four, yeah, our four director districts have to live in that district, so if you're representing District 3, you have to live in District 3. We have, you have one at-large, that's why we have five, and then at-large can live anywhere in the district.
I believe this happened in 1992, where we had a district again, according to our files.
Well, after the census.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's happened before.
And what's the benefits of going all at-large? Like, would that, that wouldn't, that would seem not to be fair, then, right? Or would it be fair?
Yeah, I think, you know, so when we look at Dallas Center Grimes, because of the population of those two towns, they were a little worried about Dallas Center not having as much representation as Grimes would, because the population is so much larger in Grimes, so they thought even if they were all at-large, they wouldn't have a fair representation. I, when I think of us in this district mapping, we're such a big district that it's really hard to, I mean, I think it's hard for people way over in eastern Warren County, number three, to know everybody that's way over, you know what I mean, just on a personal level, to know if they can, if they'll represent them, if they'll, you know, like, they feel like they're a neighbor kind of thing. So I think that there was, you know, Dallas Center Grimes is the only school I heard that was talking about going to the all-at-large, but, and I think they had, I don't know if they're even following through with that now, based on the feedback from the community, So I, this is again, for your information, we can take action in March or in April, but we have to have it kind of decided by May. So if you want our, our lady that we're working with to come up with different options, we can definitely do that, too. We just have to, to pull them for that balance. But I will send a markup and make that available in the district office if anybody wants to come see it. I mean, I can even put it online, I'm just, Heather will help me figure out how to make that mark on the map so that it can be seen.
Drop a pin.
That's it?
Drop a pin.
Yeah, that's about what it is. Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions about that?
Any questions? All right, settlement agreement with the support staff. This does require a motion and second for us to take action.
Yeah, so we had a great meeting. We had one meeting with our support staff, and agreed on a 3.337% increase for all of our support staff, and just a real, real positive. And just a real, real positive experience. So I recommend that you accept a 3.337% increase.
Any questions on the negotiating agreement? I've entertained a motion and second for us to take action.
I'll make a motion to approve the settlement agreement with the support staff as presented.
Properly moved and seconded to approve the settlement agreement with the support staff as presented. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And we'll move on to the UTV bids. This also requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So this is a replacement of our current utility vehicle. Mr. Bedwell is recommending that we use the Kubota for sundown equipment bid that's in the packet. And Mr. Bauer, ever diligent, has recognized that it's not exactly right on the math. So it's actually $20,500 is the bid. So we do have the other bids that were in here, I think we had a couple from John Deere. And I can't remember where else. There's one other one. But Mr. Bedwell has used the Kubota, that's what we currently have. They're willing to give us the most trade-in and they are also very attentive to, to customer service and servicing. Manwall, I'm sorry, that's the other one, I knew there was another one. And it was the lowest bid.
So what is the issue with the current UTV?
Age.
Just age? But it still retains that kind of value?
Yes. I don't, I don't suppose, I'm not even gonna pretend to think I know why they value some things at an amount. But that's what they told us.
Okay.
I think there's a hole in the floor of it.
It's pretty old.
Yeah.
Let me tell you.
It's seen its age.
And Don, Don has nursed it back to life quite a few times. So to finally get something out of it, I think is the goal, because it is, it's on its death.
And this is just one of those things that every, you know, six or seven years, we're gonna have to replace, like we do our mowers and stuff.
Especially if you use it for salt, it just eats away.
Yeah.
I'm ready.
I move to accept the Kubota UTV bid as presented.
I move to second that.
To properly move and second to accept the Kubota as presented on the UTV bid. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we'll move on to the long-range facility plan, this is for information only.
So this is many months in the making. I do have some information, the packet that you have has been in the board packet before, but I, we've added a few things, but they're only preliminary. So this will all be made available on our website for public to review before our next meeting. But I want to go through what it is so that there's, if there are questions, people can contact us, either Mr. Weber or myself, and we can go through any questions that people have. The first part of the packet is all the information we've seen in the past about what the scope of this project is. If you remember, we've been working with students and teachers and coaches and community members to think long-term, to think, you know, the next 10, 15, 20 years for our facilities and how we're using those and what kind of life we need to get out of them. And so the group has met several times and we've kind of narrowed down our focus into different areas. We did have a facilities meeting about a month ago, three weeks ago, and the facilities committee made recommendations about, based on funding, what projects we would like to start to kind of work toward. So if you go, the first part is all just a reminder, I didn't know if you guys would have it with you, so I wanted you to have that. But there should be a yellow sheet in your packet. So if you go to the page after that, you get the preliminary draft, which is what's on the overhead. And so we met with Matt Gillespie from Piper Sandler, who is kind of our bonding expert. He's planning on being here next month to do a work session with us over this in a lot more detail. But he trusted me to go over some preliminary information with you now. So the, the page that looks like this, and I'm not gonna put it up there because this is a blown-up version. So this is right after the preliminary draft. Where you see a check mark on this page is where we can allocate funds according to his recommendations. And so if you look, in the summer of 2023, this summer, we could allocate $6 million or $6.5 million towards the project. Next summer, we could allocate $4.47 million. In the summer of 2027, we could allocate $16.6 million. Now, let me back that up a little bit. We can allocate that with public approval. Right, this isn't just the board deciding we're gonna do this. So all of these would go before the, the public and have hearings and have a lot more information about what it all entailed, what the money would break down into, but this is just the funding that would be available. We would have the potential to borrow this or to bond for this. The capacity, great. And then the last one is the summer of 2032. There's a $10 million mark there, I don't know if you can read that very clearly. So those are the, those are kind of the, the years when we could bond or allocate money for these facilities projects. So if you look, one of the suggestions from the committee was we create a draft of what we would do and where those funding sources would come from. So to explain this, because I wanted you guys to have plenty of time to look at it before our work session next month, what we're calling Phase 1 is a combination of several different projects. So it would be a new baseball and softball field to the north of where our CTV building is. And it would also be, the very bottom island there is what we're calling Field House. It would be the restrooms and the concession stands. So baseball and softball would move to the north once that's done, and then the concessions and the restrooms would be right there. So that would be Phase 1. This, if you read it, the numbers are based on today's dollars. We know that there's going to be inflation, we know that there's going to be different costs. So we had to have a constant though, to give you an idea. So if we put all of those in Phase 1, it would cost us about $5.5 million, okay? Right now, we have about $6.5 million that we could use. So that leaves us about $927,000 that we would roll over into the next project. The next project is a little trickier because we don't know the actual cost. And we also don't know what kind of funding we can get to help support this. Ideally, we would like to do the daycare in Phase 2, so next summer. But we, we've broken into two parts. We would have Phase 1 of the daycare and then Phase 2 of the daycare, depending on funding. But Phase 1 would be the academic piece of that, so the classrooms and the office. But depending on what the cost projections come in, that would shift. So this is, the total cost for that project right now is about $4.8 million. And we had allocated about 500, looks like 500 and, oh. Let me put my glasses on so I'm not telling you something that's not true. It looks like we would need about $332,000 to make that work. Now, when we had OPN bid this, they, they thought worst-case scenario. So we don't know how close or how far those numbers are gonna be. So if we can't do the daycare in the summer of 2024 based on funding, then we would move to Phase 3, this yellow section, which is, could possibly be Part 2 of the field building, updating our science lab and our both chemistry and biology. And then doing the gym, the air conditioning for the gym, the multi-purpose room, getting ventilation in that wrestling room, and doing some of those upgrades to the locker rooms that we know need to happen. So ideally, we'd like to do the daycare, or at least project to do the daycare in the summer of 2024. As we've talked about, this last year, there was a $1.5 million matching grant that we could have applied for. So if we already know we have this money allocated for that project and that opens again, then we have the possibility of an additional $1.5 million for the daycare. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't take that off the table because we know that's a high need. But we also are realistic, when we do it, we want to do it right. And so that one is, is still up in the air, but at least gives you an idea of what that looks like. The big one is the summer of 2027. And that would be the athletic complex, which would be track, soccer, new stadium, and, I'm sorry, not soccer, track and football. Ideally soccer, right, from former soccer players. Yeah. But obviously lighting and everything that goes with the new stadium would be included in that, bleachers. It does have us finishing off a road around the backside of the campus, so taking this road all the way around and out on the east side of the, of the campus. It does have two parking lots and a cross-country loop is included in that. So that would be in Phase 3. And then depending on funding, those other items would be added as well. So that leaves kind of our, our little hodgepodge of things that we have not allocated yet for that 2032. And that could be a second part of the daycare center, which if you remember was a gym and a community center for community to use, possibly senior citizen center. It would include, it could include that field building. That, the second part of the field building, so we do concession stand and locker, or restrooms in Phase 1. The second part of that is team rooms and storage and
Locker rooms.
Locker rooms. Officials rooms for any of the sports that are happening on that north part of the complex. We did talk about creating an at-risk space and also what, a west parking lot, right now it's gravel. But if we wanted to pave that at some point, that's in that kind of fourth phase in 2032. So if you look to the, to the very far right column, that kind of tells you where that funding stream would come from. And so Matt will be here next, next month to talk us through all of that in more detail. This does assume that the public votes to continue, not to raise, but to continue our PEPAL funds for two 10-year periods. And if that doesn't happen, then obviously this shifts. And it also, it assumes that a geo-bond would be in place that kind of just takes the place of the loan that we currently have. So all of those things the public would have to agree to, and as we're just in the beginning stages of this, we wanted to get information out to people sooner rather than later so that they could see kind of how it all looks kind of, you know, towards the end. But as far as the timeline, we've talked about, you know, the facilities committee wants to go now, which is fine. But we also want to make sure we're, we're attuned to what we're spending money on and what we're asking taxpayers for. So we're, we're just working through the process of what that looks like. So before I ask questions, I want to get to the couple of things that I have on the agenda. The funding stream, the possible pathways is the sheet that Matt Gillespie provided in the packet. I would like to have the board consider retaining OPN Architect Services and possibly approve that for next month. They are the ones who have been working with us on this whole process. We met with them, Mr. Weber and I met with them last week and talked to them about some of the new, new ways of hiring construction managers or general contractors and what their experiences have been. Also thinking about, we want this to be a facility that's viable in 30 years. So what kinds of things are they thinking about now to make that an option? I don't want it to be that in 10 years, we're dealing with a drainage issue or, you know, some of those considerations. So what kinds of materials are we gonna be using to make this something that's gonna be, not only that our community has pride in, but also something that can sustain time? So we had a really good conversation with them and they are willing to be here. I think they said they'd come in March as well if, if we wanted them to, to talk a little bit more about those things. So next, we're gonna talk about securing funding for Phase 1. And then I gave you a preview of what Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4 could look like. But this is, this is kind of in, in motion as we go. But we, we had a long list of things that people wanted, and so we're trying to figure out how to make that work and still be fiscally responsible, so.
Any questions on that?
So would we sign another contract with OPN?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So what we paid them on these bills, is that for the current existing contract, was that the last?
That was for all the work to create our, our long-range plan. So this work to get us all the numbers and projections, to give us an, an inkling of what a design could look like. You know, like if we look at daycare, and let's say that they can design something that meets our needs and it's not $3 million, then if we know that we still want all those things in maybe the next phase, then they can help us, they would design that. And so they've been with us since the beginning of these conversations, so they're very open to that and have been very receptive. So yes, they, it would be a new contract and that's part of the cost that's in here in your sheet. If you look at this part right here, where there's like an initial cost, that 28% is a lot of those extra services. So it's putting in things like architect services, contingency, the builders, what do they call that? Do you have it right there?
Your contractors, contingency escalations, construction costs, subtals, soft costs, everything.
Yeah, so that's all in that kind of bottom right-hand, right here on the document. Because it changes from year to year. And so, and so when I, when I show you this, know that this, these numbers will change and you will have all that information about what we're gonna ask you to approve when we have set numbers. This is just based on all the ideas that people came up with, this is what, this is what they projected, so.
So this shows preliminary that the gym air conditioning would be summer of 2027?
Correct. And that would be new bleachers, and that's about a 1.3.
So that the gym includes new bleachers plus air conditioning?
Yes.
Okay.
And there is a breakdown, I think you guys have it in the packet I gave you, of what it, what it all includes. So I didn't, but again, it's not, it's not 100% defined yet. So that's why we need to get OPN kind of on board so we can start getting some real plans drawn so we can do these. But it gives you a general idea of what the scope of each of those projects is.
And this packet will be available in the office tomorrow?
Correct.
So I think this is the numbers. What do you, what, what, what are the next steps? Like do you, do we think about, or do we put it on there to approve Phase 1 after we get the numbers done? Contingent upon the public's approval, or how do we, how do we get that out of the office and into the people's hands, I guess?
Right, so we're gonna have the work session with Matt.
Yeah.
And once we have him here, because he's gonna be our bond expert. And so he's gonna tell us next step, just like ISG did for our air conditioning. They told us the notice flooding needs to be up by March 3rd in order, I mean, that's why we pay these companies to do that. So they're gonna talk, he's gonna work with us on their next steps. And that's why if we can get Joe Wallace there, or Rick, or whomever from OPN, then we can have an, an actual actionable task after our next meeting. I just, this is such a big topic that I wanted everybody to have it well in advance and have conversations. So if there's something that needs to be talked about with board members or, or, you know, with me or with Mr. Weber, we can, we can address those if there's something that we want to talk about before our next meeting. But the next meeting to me is kind of our timeline and our action meeting.
Right, because if this is, this would be summer of 2023, so.
Yeah, and the nice thing about that first phase is it's the baseball and softball. So we can still play over here even if it's not done right away. And so that's, you know, the advantage is it's not And so that's, you know, the advantage is it's not a space that we have to turn around within a season.
All right. Any other questions? Security update. Additional exterior video door cameras and remote access. This requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So based on feedback from our audits, we have two locations in the building that we have what we would consider not tight control of as far as where or whom has the fob to get in. Past practice has been that we issue about 10 students' fobs that come from the CTE building into this building. And that's just, we've got kids standing out there sometimes. We've got the door propped open sometimes. So what we're proposing is that we put a system in at both this exterior door, which is our main entrance from CTE, and the exterior entrance from the middle school on the other side of the street. And it'll be a camera just like the front entrances. It'll go to the secretaries at the front of the school. They'll have to buzz the students in even between classes. So then we won't have any of the fobs out. It'll be strictly accessible if they're given access by the secretary. So this bid is for those two locations.
How much more buzzing in would that give them?
It's every period. So when we have kids coming from CTE--
So like multiple times or do they usually all come?
They usually come in a herd. Yep, teenagers traveling a pack.
Because you have six extra times presenting your kids in.
They actually prefer that because then they could see who's coming in the building. I mean, so our, both of our secretaries currently sit on our safety team and that was one of their recommendations.
And the middle school would go up the season?
Correct. That's my understanding is that--
We can send--
We could send wherever.
And this system integrates with our current system--
Correct.
--capabilities. It's not just patchwork. It's good.
Yeah, we're learning that the hard way with our fire panel. Yeah. Are we like up to date with fire drills? Yes.
We have enough next year already.
This does require a motion and a second plus take action.
I'll make a motion to approve the security update, video door cameras and remote access.
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the additional exterior video door cameras and remote access. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Nay? All right, softball field upgrades.
It may sound funny because I know we just talked about getting a new softball baseball field, but this is to get us just a level playing field. So we even reached out to Coach Boggs, the old coach before our current coach, trying to figure out when was the last time that our softball field was remotely leveled. For those that know that area, it is a low-lying area compared to the baseball field anyways. So any major storm, we're going to be underwater and canceled. That's fine. The problem is the last two summers I've been here, we're canceling a number of games or moving our home date to a way to accommodate for sprinkling because of the amount of puddles. And if you saw us out there the last two summers, we had crews out there with, we were actually tarping our softball field last summer because we were trying to make sure we could get the regional games in because we were the host. And so I started last, I think it was April, calling companies to try and figure out who could do this outside of the one that all the ADs in our conference told me about. And I continued to only come up with one company that could come out and do everything from bringing the dirt in from Minnesota, which is the softball dirt that gets used, to laser leveling and then getting all our pins in for the new bases and everything and getting it to where it's just a level surface that will drain somewhat normally. And this is what we came up with, so it's just over 8,000. The nice part is since there's no current plans as we move forward with baseball and softball new to just immediately get rid of our old fields. I mean, we've talked about in the long scope of things, maybe having some more green space out that way and stuff, but nothing in the plans right now. It would allow us additional practice facilities. It would allow me middle school and high school to practice at the same time, which currently can't happen. And we're starting up our own home tournaments this summer with softball on Saturdays, which we haven't had in years. And would be the minute we have an extra playing surface that can withstand everything outside of a major storm, would open up more than three teams. We could bring six to eight teams in here and have two fields and have an actual tournament. So I don't look at it as 8,000 that in a year will never get used again. I think it's going to be used for a while. Just want to get it to where it's a little bit more of a normal playing surface, so. That's where Matt.
Mr. Weber, it says that the pricing is the 30 days unless otherwise noted.
He is, we reached out twice to each other and he knew he was waiting on this board meeting. So he says as long as it came back this week, I was fine.
And that would be good for this--
Unless it goes down.
What's that?
Unless it goes down.
But that's for even playing this summer.
This would be done this spring, yeah. He would have it. You'll see these two bids, this one and the next thing. I've been working on it for about a year, so you may see that, but we've been in constant communication.
You talked about tarping and whatnot, but is there a safety concern with what we currently have as well?
Yeah. Just because of the, there's, I have pictures I can show you. Even with a little bit of rain, the amount of divots we have out there, even as we brought in our own dirt to try and make it level, it just isn't the right stuff.
Moving forward, are there any plans for the outfield? I heard the outfield is pretty bad also, what about the softball field?
That, that's one of the biggest reasons we didn't pick that site to try and rebuild them. The costs involved, I mean, those that have been around here longer than me know that a building used to be there and there's quite a bit of that building still rubble down in there. The cost of trying to dig all of that up has prevented it to me. So I don't think, because of what it would be used for in the future, assuming we move forward with everything else, I think it would still suffice for a week.
I think Eddie would remember that when we talked about auditorium, bus shed, things like that, the cost of dirt work was astronomical for any part of the project, so.
You'll notice that a large part of that bit is just hauling all those 50 tons or whatever of dirt down there, so.
All right, are there any other questions? Not hearing any, I would entertain a motion and a second to take action.
I'd move to approve the softball field upgrade.
And I'll move to second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the softball field upgrade as presented. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Moves us to the field irrigation bid.
So this one, a little different than the softball one, is a long-term plan. So currently, for those that are unaware, the way that we keep that field alive and working to where it's somewhat green in the fall is a single water spreader with about 600 feet of hosing. And every two hours, all summer long, it gets moved and it keeps itself in a rotation, but it takes a person going out there every two hours and moving it. When Don isn't here, if he's on vacation, if he's at the fair, whatever, they all go on, it's Rick or I all last summer that goes out and does that just to attempt to keep it to where it doesn't die off, which last summer was not easy. So last summer, just before last summer, I started calling around. I actually hassled four different companies every single month until I could get someone to come down and give me a bid. This is the one we could get. And I listed those four companies in this deadlinger I know, so we can always get them too if they're not there. But this would allow us to have proper irrigation out on that football field and around it. It would also mean that long-term, that field is not getting changed. So even if the track gets removed because of the daycare going in, the plan is that field is still going to be there for either a practice field, a soccer field, whatever have you. We're keeping that field. And when that's done, we actually are going to have more fields that we're mowing and keeping track of. So the manpower going out and keeping it watered by themselves all summer long, that seems very silly. So this would be long-term. This is something that we'll continue to use as all the new stadium, all the new fields and all that move forward in years to come. This field isn't going to change, so it's just something that's kind of overdue.
So I'm assuming it has like a timer and--
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Now, different than the softball, there's no drainage issue on the football field. Those that have been on it, that have ever striped it, has a good crown on it. So it's, we don't worry about that. But, but it's, yeah, it is just, it's a lot of hours that we spend right now hand-watering it, so.
And I think the other thing that's good to note about this is that it can be expanded.
Yep.
So if the purpose of that field changes, we do have the ability to--
Extra zones.
Yeah, so thinking again futuristic, right? We can create new zones.
The other piece is also that because things can look different. So when you start looking at our plans, if we start, let's say we break ground on something for baseball and softball as we get into the fall, that really limits our current football practice field. Now, I've already talked to Coach Stewart and we know we can go to the baseball outfield, which is the old football field. We can utilize that space. We could also though, practice multiple times a week on this space if it was watered, if it could be watered properly. Right now, we don't ever touch it for practice because it would rip it up. There's just not, it doesn't, you can't hold water. We don't have enough out here, so.
All right, are there any other questions or conversation regarding the field irrigation bid? Not hearing any, I would entertain a motion to take action on the field irrigation bid.
I'll make a motion to approve the field irrigation bid.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the field irrigation bid as presented. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Early retirement. This is also an actionable item. It requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So I originally brought early retirement to the board to consider, I think way back in October. And the intent was to try and give enough notice to our eligible retirees to make a decision, have a chance to visit with their financial advisors, IFRS, all those agencies. And hopefully, we would be able to make decisions best for the district in what we call like the first hiring season. At the time, the board approved 60-year, 60 years of age and 20 years of service. And we had one teacher eligible. I am asking for the board to consider reducing that to 58 years old and 17 years of service in the district. And this is truly for management purposes. When we look at, you know, 3% new money and we look at some of the challenges of being down eight students, we know that we're going to have to make budget reductions, budget cuts. And so if we can do that through attrition and also recognize our retirees for their service here, I think it's a win-win. So I'm asking that the board approve an early retirement option. This would go to all eligible employees by Wednesday of this week. We'd ask that they come back by Tuesday, March 14th. And then they would be on the March 27th board for approval. Once these are brought to the district office, their positions would be posted as anticipated. So if I get somebody who comes in tomorrow or Wednesday and says, yep, sign me up, I will post that position as anticipated so that we can again try and get in that early hiring season or as early as we possibly can. So the retiree has seven days to withdraw their retirement and that's all spelled out in the package for the retirees. But the new numbers, 58 years old and 17 years of service in the district, would make five teachers eligible.
And they would all be aware that their positions would be posted?
I will make them aware that that's one of the, just as anticipated.
Yeah.
So we can always take those down and--
Now, so this is the thing you attached that shows eight teachers and it looks like six would still be available. Maybe I'm wrong. 58, uh, one, two--
One, two, three.
Four, five.
Four, five.
So Sharon, can you tell us, you know, weighing this being a management thing, understanding, you know, doing a cost reduction strategy versus being able to fill these positions? You are probably aware of who the five are. Are those hard to fill positions? What's the, what's our risk here of not being able to fill these positions?
That's a loaded question, Roger, but yes, all of them are hard to fill if you ask me when you have that many years of experience in the classroom. To get that back is very hard to do. As far as the position and which teaching spot it is, every position in education right now is what I would deem hard to fill. I think that the administrative team has talked through scenarios about if X person decides to take retirement, what can we do? And so I think we have a pretty solid plan for how we could still have really high-quality instruction and shift the people that we currently have to meet some of those needs. We would still have to post a position or two, but that's the intent is to reduce that and move some of the people we have so that they can still be employed. And so, yeah, I, yes, they are hard to fill. But we also have a plan that I think will put us in a good spot to be, to be in a good place for next school year. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I think enough it does. I guess my follow-up question to that is management fund-wise, that's where this gets funded from, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
We're in good shape there for if all five did choose to accept us?
Correct.
As you can see on the sheet we handed out, your balance is 429,000. Plus we should get on our 80,000 yet in tax revenue.
And so that, just as a reminder, it's 30,000 in an HRA for the retirees. So it would be 150,000 if all five of them took it. And our balance is over 420 now with another 180,000.
And what is the, what is the cost of a new teacher for, I'm sorry, what are you paying a new teacher?
Total package is about 50--
40,000 just for base for--
Well, for, yeah.
Just so I can have a, so like I'm looking at the salary for active employees only based contract.
55, right?
Yeah, so it's about, yeah, I would say it's probably about 50, 51.
For the base?
No, with insurance.
With insurance.
Yeah, base is just 40. I'm sorry, 40, yes.
And so you'll be saving 10,000 at least, you know? And so you've got payback on your investment two or three years is what it's--
Correct.
Yeah, that's all I was trying to get.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
So that seems like a reasonable--
Yes.
Payback, okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Not hearing any, does anybody have a motion to take action on this?
I'd move to propose opening the early retirement option for staff with the following criteria, 58 years old and 17 years of service in the district, which is the amendment as presented, but just to put it in.
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
All right. Roger. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve early retirement as presented. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, Roger. Gotcha. Opposed? All right. That brings us to our closed session to review the school safety plan.
A three-minute break.
A three-minute break?
Yes, so let's go ahead and take a quick break.